I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with which I stand. My nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start out with Roll Paul. John Estrich.
Here.
Bridget Hayes. I'm here. Earl Moore.
Here.
Dan Rannet House.
Here.
Curtis Ward.
Here.
We do have a forum. Let's go ahead and start with the approval of the minutes of the executive session and the regular meeting. As we begin.
I make a motion to approve.
John made a motion to approve the executive session on November 6th and the regular meeting on November 6th. Is there a second?
Second.
A real second at all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Curtis abstaining? Next, we'll go through the approval of claims and payroll. For claims, we have a total of $182,545.18. And for payroll, we have a total of $48,042.86. Is there a motion to approve?
Make that motion.
John motioned to approve both the claims and payroll as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Next is Ron Rudy. Is Ron Rudy here? Yes. 2024 golf course rates.
Good evening. This is Tom. Okay. Hi, Ron Rudy. I'm the head of the game with golf course on top of the hill. Last year we had rates, and this year I'd like to increase them a few dollars to increase more revenue for the golf course. We're running anywhere from eight to thirteen dollars per round on neighboring golf courses. I forgot to put that in my notes, but getting rid of it is running seven dollars more round during the week. We would like to run at thirty instead of twenty-five. And then we have the same golf course up. I didn't lose one more. They run about thirty-six, thirty-seven dollars a round as well Monday through Thursday, and they're high on the weekends. So what I did is I put together a price list. You also can have it in front of you, and you can see last year's rate, and you can see this year's rate. So our eighteen holes Monday through thirty, Thursday would be thirty dollars versus twenty-five, and Monday through Thursday would be twenty-seven for seniors. And then you can look at regular rate for Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and all holidays would be thirty-five dollars instead of the thirty that we now require. And then the senior rate would be thirty-two dollars for eighteen holes with a card, and you can see last year's rates as well. All the holidays have to be March 29th through Friday, Easter, Memorial Day, May 27th, July 4th, and Labor Day, the September 2nd. And those are all on holidays. Most of those fall on a Sunday or a weekend, so that rate of thirty-five will be normal. But there may be, like, March 29th might be a Friday, but say again, that would be thirty-five dollars for eighteen holes versus thirty this year. And then our Sunday through Saturday rate for nine holes would be twenty-five instead of twenty. I think the expense of the carts and the upkeep of the carts, we have to move a little bit. We haven't changed these rates in years, and I think this would be an appropriate time. And if you look down to, we had seventeen hundred and eighteen, seventeen thousand being one hundred and thirty-six rounds of golf up there. And that requires quite a payroll and work involved to have that many rounds go through. And that's January 1st, which you know, January and February is next to nothing. So, and that went through November 15th of the 2023. So based on that, if it all, everything remains the same, it could be an additional fifty-five thousand revenue for the golf course if everything remains the same. Now, there's one caveat to that. I'm not interested in changing the family membership or the senior membership because I think it would enhance, we had a hundred and sixteen members this year, which was a twenty percent increase above last year. Our goal is to get to a hundred when we finish that a hundred and sixteen. So what I'd like to do, and that would enhance more members to join, I believe, because our rate is way less than fifteen hundred, so close to staying close to us. So we're going to continue, hopefully, at eleven hundred and then nine hundred for a single membership. So that is really, this is all based on golf now. There are numbers. You've got another page behind us that, where they'll revenue might bring a key report. There's two pages to that, and you can see, and hopefully you have that in front of you. And that breaks down every single round that we had last year for technically about eight months. So, any questions? Anything to make?
I just want to make sure, these holidays, are you, you're saying, you're not closed on the holidays?
No.
You're saying the holiday rate is the same as the Friday, Saturday, and Sunday regular rate, thirty-five dollars?
Yes.
Can you tell me what replay is?
Replay, somebody comes in, they play eighteen holes, and they want to go out and play eighteen more. Is that a discount rate of fifteen dollars to play the next eighteen? They want to play nine, it'd be ten dollars more.
Thank you. So I think the last, I just wanted for everybody to know, when we talked about 2022, you reported, I don't know if it was you that reported, it wasn't, was it? Yeah, it was.
It might have been.
Eleven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four rounds for the whole year. Eleven thousand, oh, so about twelve thousand, and now you're at seventeen thousand. It's pretty, it's a big increase.
It's a huge increase.
Right. Thank you.
Been a lot of life.
Any questions for Ron? Or a motion to approve the increase in rates?
I make that motion.
John made a motion to approve the listed increase in rates. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Curtis seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Next is the Health Grant Public Hearing.
My name is Sarah Ryan Dapper. I work with the Regional Planning Commission. As you know, Franklin County was designated as a health designated, which is the insurance during legacy program through a block of community enroll affairs. And as a part of that, our bill will be receiving grant funds to, we have a park parking lot. Our understanding is that you will receive approximately three hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. The remaining funds will come from the town's ARPA funds to build it out in that project. There is two, there are two public hearings that are required before the application goes in, which is due January 20th. This will be the first public hearing. I do want to preface this by saying that we do have a call with the funding agency next Wednesday. To clarify some dollar amounts, they originally encouraged us to apply for more grant funds than I think what was actually designated, so we're going to get some clarity on that next week. So this public hearing will be based on the numbers, how I feel they will likely be allocated. However, just to note that for the second public hearing, we will find some of these numbers and make sure they're correct after talking with Oprah next week. So I'll bring the required language, and if anybody has any comments, questions, we can let you know about that. So on our ballot, January 20th, 2024, the town of Brookville intends to apply to the Indiana Office of Community Enroll Affairs for a grant from the State Community Development Block Grant Program. This is through the Insurance During Legacy Program that was awarded to Franklin County. This program is funded by Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as I mentioned. These funds are to be used for a community development project that will include the following activities: pating the existing parking lot to provide seventy to eighty spaces, allowing ADA accessibility to the rest of the park, including the softball field, shelters, and one line scenic walking trail. Additionally, eight overhead lights will be installed on four concrete islands with some vegetation, and then traffic flow will be one-way. This will be to ensure that one of the most widely used tap and that it is going to be accessible to everyone, even the ADA compliant. The total amount of CDVG/CDB funds to be requested will be two hundred and ninety-four thousand, one dollar and fifty cents. The remaining fifty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars will be spent from the town's ARPA funds. This public hearing is to provide interested parties an opportunity to express their views on this proposed federally funded project.
So those dollar amounts, that fifty-eight thousand from the town, those and the two-hundred-and-ninety-some-on, those are the numbers you said would be fine-tuned at the second?
Yes, those could change. Those are based off of what we know right now in terms of the grant funds versus local funds and what can be paid from each of them. However, next Wednesday, we'll have a public hearing. We'll have, like I said, the second public hearing will be the exact numbers.
Okay. So just so that we have a little bit of perspective, so this is the first of four projects that were involved in the Hoosier During Legacy Program grant or program that we approved as Strategic Investment Plan here a few meetings ago. And for some reason, we have to, although we were approved for the program itself and we are approved for the four programs, we now have to actually apply for the one program that is going to be using CDVG money, which is that matching money, because that, that help program was five hundred thousand of the town money, uh, town ARPA money. And then we got the three hundred and thirty-three from CDVG. And so because we're using that three hundred and thirty-three from CDVG, we have to actually put in an official application, and so that's what this is all about. Just so everybody has a little perspective. And then Lou, do you want to, I mean, is this the time to talk about the project?
Yeah, if there are any questions on this, it's a good project, then we'll definitely ask those.
Okay, sorry. Does anybody have anything for her? You're good. Lou, do you want to go ahead and talk about the project?
Thank you. We were approached.
And your name is?
My name is Lou Savka. I'm with Frye Associates. I have a handout.
Thank you.
With colored pictures of each one of your places and a business card, and there's a drawing, a mark with these as well. Anyway, maybe you were probably familiar with part of my question, these photographs of this existing condition. We were approached about a drawing, and the cost has been poured based on the grant funding project. The original name, that's an estimate, and some local sources, concrete plate, and what it was really about, the overall grant requirements in mind. And so with that, there's formal planning process, design, formal bidding, has to be complied with, pages, pages, et cetera, et cetera. So page two of your handout is cost estimate for such reflected in a drawing on the third page of your handout. So there's actually ninety-seven spaces provided in this particular plan. There are four light posts with two heads. There's small drainage inlets involved in this, because this is Indiana, asphalt is still horse material, so we like to drain the water off that parking lot to preserve the longevity of the asphalt. So this cost estimate was prepared basically as they moved to earlier. This is a regard public hearing ahead of the actual application. Any questions? Anyone have any comments?
You'll leave that? Thank you. And you discussed this with Rocky Sparks, right?
Yes.
Did he have any concerns?
No, I think based on, we talked about it in the prior meeting, he preferred the concrete center rather than bumpers. Better product, basically, so.
Any questions for her? Okay, thank you. So at this point, if there's no questions, any questions from the public? Right, this is a public hearing. Any questions from the public about this project? I see no questions, so could I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I make that motion.
John made a motion to close a public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Dan seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Public hearing is closed. Next is the Reservoir Road Sewer Run Project.
I want to make a motion to terminate the Brookfield Sewer Extension for Franklin County Housing Project, disband the BOT Committee for the project, and send a termination letter to the SCI Ready to terminate the town's involvement for the Ready Grant for this project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Dan seconded. So now we'll open it up for discussion. John, could you, I guess, outline why you want to do this?
If the project wants to go forward and they can find Brookfield Lake Regional Waste District or the county as a conduit, I'm all in favor of. But I don't want the town to be a conduit for this. It's all outside of town. I don't see where a resident of the town is going to benefit from this. At the least, I think rates will increase with the maintenance and any improvements that happen up there. If this were inside the town, I'd be fine. But it's outside of town, I don't want to be a part of it.
So just so you know, not enough, I explained this earlier, but when we first started to do this, I talked to Big Tilly about the rate study. I don't know if you guys remember, it's been a while. But one of the things that I talked with them about is, I asked them to come up with a rate study only for the new reservoir properties, I guess, that this would affect, and that not to include the residents of the town. And what he said that came over his name is that they do that a lot. They isolate certain areas so that the rates for that area would be affected only by the, you know, upkeep and maintenance of that area, of that specific area. So that it is possible to do to separate the rates, that the, so the town rates would not be affected whatsoever about the new area.
The empty lot would pay for anything that happens after that. It wouldn't be the town profit.
Say that again.
The empty lots up there that were going to.
Yes.
They would pay for the maintenance and everything.
That is my understanding. And then we talked about doing the actual rate study, and then every, and then I think Curtis, well, I don't know if Curtis said it, but somebody said, why do a rate study until we get the loan, until the project?
So we don't know that for sure.
So we didn't, so we didn't pay the, I think, I think he said it was anywhere from three, three thousand, I think, maybe, to do such a limited rate study, because it wouldn't require that much research for them. But we opted not to do that, but he said it was definitely something that they've done in the past. But that is exactly how he explained it to me, is that it would only be their rates that we could isolate it. So, I don't know if that helps at all. I mean, I just, the whole point was not to, this not to affect the town residents' rates at all. At least that was my idea.
What do you?
Well, we're still discussing. Do you have anything to add to the discussion? Do you guys have anything? Andy, do you?
There are representatives from SCI Ready here.
Can you put your microphone on?
There are representatives from SCI Ready here. I know Mary Cardes here and John Jones, who's their attorney, that may be able to discuss any implications. As far as someone standing in place of the town, such as the Brookfield Lake, RWD, or the county, I think you would need to see that happen first. If that's what the, if that is the route that we're going to go, rather than terminating the existing grant agreement, you would be looking to assign the grant agreement to a different entity.
Why couldn't we terminate and they go find a different agency? I don't see why we would have to be the one to find a different agency. I don't want any part of it.
Right, so, and I would defer to John or Mary to talk about the grant process, but if we terminate the grant, if the town terminates the grant agreement, the town, the money goes back to SCI Ready, goes back into the pot, and then it's going to fall under whatever their grant process is, and I don't know where they're at in the grant process. So, but there are a few people here.
So, it might be, not for us to go look for someone or convince someone to take it, but to allow those people, I mean, those, these people know what we're doing or what the intent is. To just give them some time to figure out if they can take it over, or, you know, just the different ramifications. I mean, I would just ask that such a one-eighty from where the town was going to be just tabled for a little bit, to give, to give those other entities time to look into it, research it. Because as you know, John, and all of us here, is that we were told that the only person, the only entity that could take this grant was the town of Brookfield, because we were the ones who owned the sewer plant. We were told that numerous times. There was no other entity that could do it. And instead of losing out on four point four million dollars, we took it. At least that was one of the main reasons I voted to, to pursue the grant and to continue moving it down the road so we could find out what was out there, what was best for us, what contractors and engineers could do for us for that amount of money, free money from the state, let's take it. But we were told that we were the only ones that could do it. And so I hear you don't, I understand what you're saying, but if now the idea is that another entity can take the lead on this project, I would just like some time to figure out if those entities are able to do it, and if the answer is no, then fine, let's terminate. But at least provide them with, and I, some time to just look into the matter.
Well, if we do that, we need to put a stop to everything that's going on right now, because it's stupid to go on if at the end we're going to terminate it. If they can find somebody else to take over, then they can be in front of the process. They can continue.
As far as I know, nothing's really going on. I mean, we have the proposals, right?
We have the committee.
I mean, it's in our.
We have to put a stop to all of that.
Just, you mean, not schedule any more committee meetings? I mean, that's pretty easy to do. Mary, would you like to say anything? Because, I mean, the other, the other part of this is that, you know, these, these public meetings and our decisions to go back and forth on so many different things with IDDC, as you know, SCI Ready 2.0 has now been being advertised. And SCI Ready 2.0 is now, the Southeast region can now apply for up to seventy-five million dollars worth of grants that IDDC is going to approve and not approve. And, you know, it's just our, just something to consider is that if this municipality gives money back, I'm not sure how willing these people would be to give us money for future projects. And that's something, you can't really quantify, it's not really, you know, this will happen. It's just something about your reputation that I just want us to consider, that we want to be in good favor with the state because they have so much, they give us so much funding. And that's just something to kind of think about, is all I'm saying.
If this money were truly for the town of Brookfield, I would not even begin to say send it back. But it's not for the town of Brookfield.
I know.
We listened to a proposal before this about the parking lot to help the citizens of Brookfield. It was, that to me, this isn't Brookfield, never has been, may never be. So I don't know why the town of Brookfield, the board that represents the people of Brookfield, has to vote on something that, you know, is in the county. I mean, it's just, the way this was set up, my understanding, because I'm late to this, because they were going to annex.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
I'm speaking, but that's okay. They were going to annex.
You can bring it closer to me.
Don't tell me how to do it.
I'm sorry.
Microphone, Jesus. But, I mean, they, the annex didn't work, so they just said, oh, we don't worry about that. It's a whole different deal if it's annexed, because those are the town that we represent. But it's not. It's a county. We have, we will get no benefit other than the sewage from this project. And yeah, I've heard the four, 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 and all that stuff, but it is probably true, but.
Four, four, four.
How does a dollar work?
There are indirect costs, though. You do, I mean, there are indirect costs in terms of increased development, increase, which increasing housing is known to increase your economic development, increase the amount of students in the school. I mean, there are other, not necessarily direct benefits to the town of Brookfield today with the dollar, but there are indirect, it's the progress and the growth, because Brookfield's the center of the county. I mean, it's like a mile away. So, I mean, it's not that it's just.
I mean, I think we have a vote on the motion.
Well, do you mind if we?
We're not interested, or I'm not interested in hearing your opinion and try to convince the sub-awards. So either, either vote on the motion or.
We'll vote, Dan, but do you mind if I get other comments from people? Seems like a lot of people are here to talk.
You're the only one who's been talking.
Are there any other comments from the public? Yes, sir. Oh, yes, ma'am. Please sit down here. You have two minutes to talk.
My name is Shelley Munster, and my suggestion would be just, I will not terminate. I think that the negative consequences of doing something that went like that far outweighing the challenges that you're facing. There have been, there's just been so much progress in our county and our town in the last few years, and there's a lot of intelligent people that can figure this out. I think that terminating, turning the money back, you know, who knows if we'll even get to keep it then. I just think I would keep it and move forward, work with some people, and just try to figure out a way that, you know, works for everyone. But I would, I think, you know, terminating, terminating is definitely a mistake. It would have a lot of negative consequences.
Thank you, Shelley.
Nancy Lee, Executive Director of Main Street Brookfield. I wholeheartedly concur with Shelley. Terminating this contract will be a huge mistake for Brookfield. It would have a very definite negative impact on town of Brookfield and all the progress that we've been mentioning. Main Street Brookfield, our purpose is revitalization of our downtown. Main Street Brookville, our purpose is to beautify the station of our downtown. We see the sewer line as a way of bringing more people into our county, more children to our schools, more people to walk into our businesses of downtown Main Street. And we are, we purpose to fill the ten vacant buildings that we have in our town. And we know that this additional population and foot traffic that will be in the downtown area will be of huge benefit to our town. We are, we have phenomenal progress over the last five years, steady growth over the last 20 years, and I'm really glad to see it continue.
Thank you, Nancy.
Uh, I'm Mark O'Hoofy, I'm the Director of the Brooklyn County Area Board Regarding Installation Sewers. As the Reservoir Hill, our, our, the Stoddish Sewers from Reservoir Hill, I realize the logistics of a project this size, it takes a lot of time with funding, making it all the way through. I spoke with Joe Mauer, head of the American Health Department. He is definitely a favor giving sewers to this area. As he stated, it's not a question of logistics in this area, it's sewers, the willingness to sewers, along with the benefits of a healthier environment. Sewers from the Crease Park, you know, your homes already built in this area. I personally have all sewers going to improve some of my vehicles by farm of the student of these every homeowners, but girl pay for a tap on feet instead of installing an extended system, but I'm sure there are a decent opposition. I realize the life continuing celebration upon us, that you guys have your hands full for the next couple of months. So, realizing getting sewers on Reservoir Hill is probably a backburner issue at this time. I just came here tonight to let you know that there is support for a project that is important. I read a state letter, February 20, 2008, to the town council, 15 years ago. This has been a backburner issue for 15 years. Now you've got the money, and you're taking down the road again, because you have opposition. Uh, a lot of the opposition are friends of mine, neighbors of mine. I respect their position, but you have opposition when Main Street paid to, or when the state in the end paid to Main Street, you have opposition, Brooklyn would decide, oh, Sam, how did that turn out? It turned out okay. When you built the school before, you had opposition to that. You went ahead and did it, how did that turn out? It turned out okay. You've got opposition to frisk it off. It seems like whenever you guys have opposition, you get a bump. You don't see anything true. Either grow up, act, spy, or let the opposition be town council. Thanks.
Thank you for sharing this with me.
Victoria Meyer, and my opinion on this is that we should definitely do as John and Dan have said, and decline the, the, uh, the grant. Um, this is something the town of Brookville wants to get involved in. And I think there's a lot of opposition, if you want, if that's the correct word you want to use, from the people in Brookville, because again, there's no value to us. And I know, I keep hearing everybody saying, oh, this is gonna bring all these people to Brookville, all these kids, we're gonna be on our school. What guarantees do we have of that? Absolutely none. Uh, there's no industry here. There's no local people work. There's no work people shop. And those two things alone is going to deter people from, uh, moving to Brookville. And also, it's just, it seems like there's so much, uh, unclear with everyone involved in this whole thing about the process and, and who's gonna pay what, and what will the folks at Reservoir Hill and the Pappy pay for this? One time a year, nothing at all, and you hear, oh, yeah, there are gonna, there will be monthly, uh, payments from them as well. So, it's just not anything that the town of Brookville needs to be getting involved in. Let the county deal with it, if they wanna deal with it. But we need to step out of this and stop eating with it and worse and move on.
Thank you.
My name's Kurt Rehman, and I live in, uh, Reservoir Hill already. And, uh, a lot of what they said about needing sewers up there, I know this is not designed to address existing conditions. It's for housing now. Our, our, one of the big oppositions that I've heard is maintenance costs. Um, this is gonna be a brand new system. You basically are not gonna have maintenance costs for probably the first 10 years. They will be wire. The sewers in Brookville, many, I don't know, the main sewers are over 100 years old. And we don't spend millions of dollars every year on maintaining our sewers. Why do you think a brand new system is gonna cost the taxpayers money? For first place, taxpayers do not pay for sewer projects. Our retailers are run by whatever their usual fees are. Their downwind tax money, it's water and sewer both are like independent companies that are funded by their rent users. The rates are gonna be separately determined for that area, and they will compensate to do the maintenance that's necessary up there. I reviewed, um, the committee to review the companies that put in requests for, uh, doing this project. I'm familiar with every one of them. Every one of them has worked at the town in the past, have done a mid-workforce. I'm not sure why their, some of their comments coming out like, uh, what is this design? Or what if this, or what if that? These companies have been doing this for years. This is what they do. I mean, there's thousands of these types of systems all over the United States that work perfectly fine. And, uh, you know, it's not just a economic issue up there, it's an environmental issue. And, you know, you think there's, there's no benefit to town? You don't think having more people living back close to town is not a good thing? I mean, with business owners in here, uh, I'm sure they would like to have more customers. It's not to say that we, we're gonna have 200 new ones built and 400 families, and we're gonna immediately. But it's a process of, you know, building a community. And if you want the community to grow, this is a good step.
Thank you, sir.
So, Bill Sherman. So, I am from the Ready Board, and I was one of the people that supported this. I believe our next ready meeting is set for December the 5th, uh, I look December 5th. And so, I would say that, I, I, I would say I'll settle aside John for that matter. It appears that the town of Brookville doesn't wanna have ownership in it, and that, that's, if you understand what I think, but a good point. I would only ask that, as your attorney has indicated, it'd be nice if we could, uh, as John indicated, to shut down the evaluation situation and table this situation till your next meeting to make that decision. It'll come before my December 5th meeting, after anyone's your next meeting. Do you remember?
No, it would be December 4th.
Do you have, we wouldn't meet before my next meeting, so. So, I can go back to our board at that moment, time if you decide to rescind the situation. So, I would just ask that, give us the opportunity to look at other options. We already have, and had before for that matter, but I would just ask that you give us the time, not actually the table motion. And I would also ask that John indicate time out, shut, shut the, there's a need to get the committee back together. There's been doing more last month, they haven't been able to. That'd kind of be my one recommendation. I think it does have a huge value to our community and residual effect on our town, so.
Thank you.
Respectfully, um, we were one of the ones that submitted on the proposal. Basically, it was for designing hearing and really so difficult research on there. And Mary, currently, if I'm wrong, I thought the ready grant program required some local development investment as a match to the ready grant. That being said, as I understand it, there was a condominium project potentially at bottom of the hill within close proximity of the town limits that could be annexed in. So, it wasn't just that it's out of the distance someplace in some high school. I think this required a local match in terms of development investment in this area. When you can control sewers that you are treating, I think it's in your best interest. If you sell your plant is at 40% capacity. You're right, based on the discussion you had earlier, that folks outside your regular town limits and within limits of this project would in effect pay different rates than the folks in town. Folks in town shouldn't suffer any consequences, great, great perspective pieces because of this project. Another thing I'd like to point out is, is there may be some folks here tonight that are upset that they're being forced to hook on to a sanitary sewer that they didn't ask for or don't care about for a number of reasons. The state law has changed very drastically in the last several years, um, allowing property owners to file for a waiver when they're required to hook on. Years past, it was, if it was a sewer within 300 feet of your property, installed by an authority, um, or sewers, you had to hook on. But that's not the case anymore. So, folks that have a working septic system that are out along this route, you will have an opportunity to file for a waiver if you have a working septic system. Those who don't, and can't prove otherwise, of course, they would be required to hook on. So, it's not a willing, nearly attempt to make everybody that owns property along the route to hook on. They just, you have to abide by the law that exists.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I mean, I, I understand that point, but 50% of people deciding not to hook on, that's 50% of the revenue, it's not gonna be genuine. So, I mean, yeah, it sounds like that, but the project is bringing in less money.
So, we did a survey board, and I don't know if you saw those results. Um, Derek Cole has copies of those. I don't know, Derek, did you ever give, give those results, the survey results out to the people?
No.
No?
I wouldn't give results out.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I wouldn't give results out.
You wouldn't? You wouldn't give results out?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
They, they didn't follow the record.
Okay, I thought you wanted the, I thought, oh, I'm sorry. I thought you wanted those, uh, surveys so that you could give the results out to the people. That's why I didn't, I didn't, um, release those. But I do have them in my papers.
Yeah, I wanted those results so that I could prepare myself for the meetings.
Oh, okay.
So, I didn't say anything about giving them out.
Giving them out, okay, so sorry. Okay, I thought that was the main gist of it. Um, so, I did prepare an analysis of those surveys, Dan. And one of the questions happened to be, one of the questions was, if a sewer line were to be installed at a reasonable monthly cost, would you hook on? And, you know, remember, we sent this out to 223 people, and only 21%, we got 47 surveys back. So, only 20% of the people on the hill even responded to the survey. So, of those people that did respond, obviously, um, if a sewer line were to be installed at a reasonable monthly cost, would you hook on? And 24 people said yes. And 15 said no. Uh, four said unsure. One said maybe. And three people left a blank. So, if you compute that, it came up with 62% of the people said they would hook on if it was installed at a reasonable monthly cost.
Did it go separate and ask why they wanted to hook on?
No. The next question was, what would you consider is a reasonable cost? And, and basically, the people said all kinds of stuff. So, I, I determined that the average response was about $45 to $50 a month, minus the people that said, I'm not paying anything, and the people that said, you know, $200. Um, so that is at least something you can hang your hat on. And we did ask the people on the hill, and I would say the majority of them said they would hook on.
Again, without the support data that, that says, you know, if I've got an exempt date, I'm gonna say yes. I'm the manager of survey.
Sure.
And all that stuff, so.
I mean, I'm not saying this is, you know, take it to court, I'm just saying.
Presenting the numbers and presenting it to the people like it's, you know, foolish not to do this.
No.
Everybody wants it. I'd be more concerned if only seven, 47 people turned it back, because I could say to those other hundred and some people, they don't want it.
I don't think you can, I don't think you can extrapolate that, because people didn't send a survey that.
We all know that figures.
Well, I just wanted to present the information as, as we, as we sent it out. That's all.
That, that question there was sent out after you guys started the first bit. And the response that I got back from the majority of people is there's no reason to rescind it then because of. Um, my name is Eric Cole. I'm on the BTO committee and resident up on the hill. Uh, I'm gonna go back to my mantra. I am for this project if it's done for the right reasons and the right way. Couple of things I feel are being done the wrong way. You mentioned, uh, that you get an exemption. The way that it is written out, this board, they force anybody to hook up, or may, they may force anybody to hook up at any point, this board and future board. And my feeling towards that is that it's taxation without representation. We have no representation on this board, and at any point, you can force us to hook on. And I'm married upwards of 15,000, you're gonna fill a little septic tank, and you gotta get it back to your house. All this is being done with no public hearings for the town. Those people are effects on the hill. I even talked to Mary McCarty about it. She said, since it's ready funds, all ready funds, we do not require public hearing for that. And all that is happening also with the VOT trying to spend that federal money through what they call secret meetings. And without consulting the grant accordingly to the DMG, and there's no secret meetings. There's only regular meetings and executive sessions. My next issue is, the town has granted this sewer line around to SMW Housing Projects in Harbor, and to run the DNG, and all of those was a potential match of $12 million for DNG and $24 million for SMW Homes. They do not have to build the homes, but they will run past homes that may be required to hook up. Brings me to the question, again, with the way the wording of the grant is, do the houses come first, or does it align with the grant overspend? With my work with federal grants and consulting people who have worked with federal grants, this grant does not make sense. Has never heard of a potential match, and when looking at the grant, again, will require matches from developers. I've heard that a regional match is, but again, I'm gonna go back to the grant agreement that was signed by the town president, that there is a developer match. I'm going to, uh, going by the town app on paper, the grant agreement, not what's done backwards.
Thank you, Derek. Do you want to sum up before you go? I hate to stop you, but.
Uh, it just needs to be done for the right, right reasons. And, uh, if they think it's going to help the schools and stuff like that, I would mention to read the observer from the school board's last meeting.
Thank you.
Can I just say, as far as the process goes, the VOT process requires that the committee be created, and the VOT process does permit the VOT committee to discuss proposals with the offers in an executive session set, which is not what has happened so far. The committee have a meeting to review the proposals. My advice to the committee was, is if all you're doing is reviewing proposals, then it needs to be done at a, at a public meeting. Uh, but if you're gonna have discussions, that's certainly something that you can do in the executive session. And any decision, if there were to be a proposal accepted, the VOT process requires a public hearing. Requires a public hearing. And this, the town municipalities have the ability, have the authority to require hookups within, if there's a sewer line within 300 feet of your property, they may do that. I'm, I'm looking at this action here. May do that, they don't have to do that.
Would you be kind, so kind to explain the VOT process?
So, the first part of the process was the RFPQ that was sent out, was a request for proposals and qualifications. Those were submitted, um, I believe they had six come in, right? Six proposals come in. Um, and then the process, for the, the committee then is supposed to do a technical review of the proposals that have been submitted and make a recommendation to the.
of the proposals that have been submitted and make a recommendation to the council. Because the ultimate decider of the proposal would be the town council. As I said, if you're reviewing, the committees have formally created a board, subject to the overall, so if we're just reviewing the proposals, my opinion was that that, that those are held in a public meeting. Discussions with people that made proposals, companies that made proposals, can take place in the executive session. And then ultimately, the committee then will make a recommendation to the town council, and the town council will be the one that will ultimately decide which proposal to accept.
What does the, what does the T represent? Transfer?
Bill Operate Transfer.
So it's Bill Operate Transfer. So at some period of time, when all the BNOs done, T becomes here town, here's your, you know, here's your soil. And with no engineering stuff on you. So maybe that's just a little, I'd never heard of that. But I'm all in.
And that's, I think that's why you saw six proposals get submitted, because it is opening it right now, and there's probably six different opinions as to how the project can be completed for the 4.4 million. And that is the committee's job then, is to do a technical review of those proposals and make a recommendation to council.
I don't take too much of your time. But long evening. Just want to introduce myself, kind of my role in this. I'm Mary McCarty, Director of the Southeast Region Interregional Committee Commission. And also, our office was Richard as the administrator for the Southeast Region Eschiary Regulation for Funds. Just so you know, we individuals, you were not the only applicant to receive funds or apply for funds for Eschiary. So you were approved by the Ready Board, through their process, and then given the review by both IEDC, which is the United Development Corporation, as well as EY Ernst &amp; Aaron's, the National County Firm. So they have reviewed your documents. It wasn't taking a lot, at least, to reward you. Our role in this is just for you to be happy and the Ready Board to be happy. We serve as a liaison between the Eschiary Ready Board, Town Brookville, you know, whatever grantee is there, and then IEDC. So I think they're gonna probably want some action at some point, you know, to see some progress. But, you know, we have John Cole, who is the Eschiary Ready Attorney, also the people to answer any questions. Just want to introduce myself because I have been involved in the process, and it's really where that's been going on. And can try to answer any questions or help people see that the $4.4 million is basically your mortgage subsidy.
And back to what I was saying, as far as the authority for the hookups, again, it's 300 feet within a property line. It's a May. It doesn't have to be exercised. Regional sewer districts and municipalities may require hookups if there's a line within 300 feet of the property. You can apply for one 10-year exemption and then two additional five-year exemptions on your septic system if your septic system is functional. But there is, I mean, there's a finite timeframe on septic. I mean, they're limited by their functionality. They're limited by how much area your property is. There's a lot of things that go into that. And if it, if it... Municipalities all over the state, there's sewer lines and water lines figure out from within, and sewer areas outside of the municipality. The municipality can exercise those powers up to 10 miles outside of its district. So technically, Brookville has a 10-mile radius around its town limits that it could exercise those powers, you know, if there's a sewer line. So if you're looking at, just from a legal standpoint, if you're looking at, there is a limit to how long septic will be able to be used on these parcels. You guys are more familiar with these parcels than I am. You know how big the lots are. But if there's a finite timeframe for septic to be an option on these parcels, and if septic's aren't an option, then somebody, the health department's gonna be coming to the town and saying, "Hey, can you run a line to these people? They can't do septic anymore." And that is what's being asked right now. The difference between right now and later is right now, there's $4.4 million to pay for. So just a quick analysis of the town's authority and the VOT process.
Some of my thoughts on the whole project, I'm pretty sure that is what my thoughts are since I wrote to you earlier. Early, you mentioned, right after you got on board, that you work for this project because it benefited, you know, big developers. Is that still the case?
I'm more concerned about the citizens that live up there currently right now than I am, well, I said, them. I know recently, there's been a whole lot more people that live up there currently that have turned against it.
For any, just a reason?
They all give you all kinds of different reasons. Too much chaos going on about the different projects, what they gotta do, what they're not gotta do. I know just the last couple of weeks itself, there've been a ton of people totally turned against it, that work for it.
I think the issue still is, there's so many questions. Bridget mentioned doing the study earlier, and I proposed that at that time because we didn't know if we were doing a step-down system or doing a traditional system. The maintenance costs differed quite largely between each system and with six different respondents' viewpoints on it. Actually, the maintenance costs of each one of them would be different. So I don't agree that this can be a large influence for the town of Brookville in the future. Like Kurt said, we have sewer lines that have been on six year, and we've not spent hardly anything on updates to our current sewer infrastructure. So... The one reason I asked you, you know, if you were against big developers, it's been said that I own this grant just to benefit myself, which isn't true, but let's not have that argument. And if it were true, I'd...
I'd talk to you.
But that's fine, Dan. We did all fine.
No, we won't.
I volunteer. Just take my property out of it. It's still the best thing for the town of Brookville, whether you guys want to admit it or not. It brings in housing. It brings, it solves a problem for the people up there. Take my property out of it. I don't need it. I really offered my property up so that town of Brookville could get this. Whether you want to leave that or not.
Well, is it not true you own 10 acres?
I own 12. I have 12 acres.
So with septic tanks, you have to have one acre per lot, is that true?
That's not true.
That's not true.
That's not.
So with the sewer system, it's half that. So now your 10 lots become 20 lots.
That's also not true.
Okay.
It's not going to cost you. We'll see. So take my property out of it. Dave White and Greg Graff, they are Brookville taxpayers. They own property in the proposed sewer expansion area. They are currently taxpayers of Town Brookville. They are, a portion of, one third of their property is in the town limits. That property has been tried to be, being sold for the last several decades unsuccessfully, largely for the fact that it lacks the infrastructure needed. This was a way to get that up there. Don't kill the whole project simply despite me or despite some of the other developers. When you have a property owner that's in the town of Brookville that you represent, that needs this. And this would be a benefit because that is tax basis in there. So before killing it tonight, take a few weeks, like Bill said, to consider the project. Take my property out of it. I know Tom may not agree, some of my partners may not agree, but honestly, I don't care. It was never about me, whether you want to make it about me or not. Take my property out of it. It's for the best for the county. It's best for the school system. It has those direct benefits to the town, for Brookville. And one of the systems that we proposed was offering $300,000 to $400,000 for improvements to our current sewer system, which does help the town of Brookville. And if you are able to expand your services, we're at 40% capacity at our sewer system. I'd always heard 50, 40 is an even better number. That allows us to be more intentional on how we expand out in the future and allows us to cut costs for residents of Brookville. Because one day, this system's going to down, it will go down eventually, or it will have large impacts. And instead of the town people only paying for it, we can have other users that are paying for it. House forces are being used, but other users who are for the project that will hook onto it, you know, say to the developers that aren't there, "Hey, you have to have so many things put in with X amount of time, so they are paying for it." There's other ways around this without simply saying no. So I'm offering, take my property out of it. Let the other people up there that need it, let others be, let Dave and Greg, let them have it. Let the other people that want it for their own systems, little old lady can't afford, put $15,000, $20,000 up again. Let them hook up to sewer. It's not going to cost $15,000. I hooked up plenty of sewers over the last several years. Tom has not been closing $15,000 on a sewer. Septic system, upwards of $15,000 to $20,000 below. So your numbers are completely off base. Just take my property out of it. Let the other people have it and just move on with it. The other thing is, is if you think that the town of Brookville or the county for that, for matter, will ever get any other ready money or any other state money or open money, as steward of this project, when we say no thanks to $4.5 million simply because we didn't want to, without having a full set of facts, we will never get that again. So you are impacting the town residents of Brookville because we won't leave a grant in the future that benefits our residents, and everyone will say, "We're gonna give it to somebody else that's gonna steward this money better." That's my only concern with the project. We're doing it this way.
I leave my motion as stated.
I'd like to speak. You're still here. My name's Todd Saxner. So a couple of things here, and we all know each other, right? You guys and, and I understand your report as far as town of Brookville, that's not part of the town of Brookville. It hasn't any access. But I do think, obviously, the town of Brookville will benefit from the sewer that's paid, right? That they will pay, people have to pay those dues, and they'll be paid to the city of Brookville, correct? And then, when we talk about it, I guess, not only are they gonna benefit that way, but they're gonna benefit from people coming in and more house chatter. And I guess I don't want you to look at it, and I apologize, I don't want you to look at it maybe as, I guess you have to step back and say, "I know it's coming through you, but maybe not as a, hey, maybe a member of the city of Brookville, how about you're part of Franklin County too? You know what I'm saying? You're part of Franklin County. And we want the best for Franklin County, right? We want the best for Franklin County schools. And I know this is directed to there. And I think if you guys really dig down and you look at it and say, "Hey, maybe we can, maybe Brookville, just maybe, just give it a second. Just take another week to deal with that," is what I'm asking. And maybe you do want to keep it. But if it's not, then let's give it an opportunity to last because I do think that's something that's chicken's head. And I just feel like, if we get this up, it's gone. So I just, maybe, maybe, maybe Brookville can really benefit from it. You know, I know there's going to be people moving up there eventually, probably, but they will. And it's gonna fill up restaurants and, you know, well, not fill up restaurants, but they're gonna come do these, these arts facilities. So I just want to be able to. I don't want you to shut me down tonight. And I don't know if this is even about if this is what's gonna happen, to be honest. Just give it an opportunity to stay alive.
Thank you, Todd. Would anyone else like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Jane. I do work on the Hill. I'm here to get the shores. Yeah, Brookville needs to grow, but people who live here don't spend a lot of time in this town. They go shopping in Oxford and Harrison. They buy little shoes there. They might buy a cup of coffee or go to the restaurants, but that's something they do in this town. If you're not spending money in this town. Most people send up to East Central School, and some of the Brookville schools. Quite a few do that. And if you send that survey out again, I guarantee you'll get full results because mine got buried on my power, and I lost two lakes, and voted on. So why didn't fill mine out? Send it to me now. I'll fill it out.
Thank you, ma'am. Just no other comments? There's a motion on the table and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Curtis abstained. Motion carried. Can you, can I have that? Okay, thanks. So the motion that was approved was to terminate the Brookville sewer extension for the Franklin County Housing Project, disband the VOT committee for the project, and send a termination letter to Eschiary Ready to terminate the town's involvement for the ready grant for this project. Motion carried. Next on the, well, the next agenda is no longer necessary. Can we, can everybody, if you want to leave, please leave back. We have the rest of the meeting to go through. Thank you so much for coming. The next on the agenda is ordinance 2023-16, salary ordinance a member?
When we even talked about the town manager position, it was not just going to be the head of the board. Could we like to add an add-on again? If not, we can wait until we determine the salary and follow here.
So is this, this doesn't include the markup that you sent us, right?
Basically, I'll give you, correct.
Okay, so that, so that the markup, this version that we're looking at basically has taken out the Director of Special Projects. They have taken out... I'm sorry. Gina, can you close those doors? Thank you. So we took out the Director of Special Projects salary, which was 22, 21 biweekly. And then the golf course superintendent, we took out $25.20 per hour. And then the last one was the police lieutenant for $27.15 per hour. So those were all taken out as well, based off of other decisions that we've made throughout the year. So I don't know, does anybody, does anybody want to talk about the salary for the town manager and take those out or not? Does anybody have any opinions on those?
I think we need to wait till we are in negotiations with applicants.
We can't actually put it out until we know the salary. That's why I didn't, I didn't...
Please?
I'm sorry. I did not advertise this position like I said I would two weeks ago because I discovered I didn't know what the salary was because we hadn't voted on it. So I actually never even sent it out because we didn't have the salary. So I don't think we can advertise for a position without knowing how much it's gonna be, we're gonna offer to pay. This would just, just be that alone. So, um... Not really sure what to, I say, maybe we just make it... Do we know what the town administrator made the last time we had a town administrator?
I have to look back.
I'm sorry.
I don't think it was comparable to the Director of Special Projects, who's making this last...
Oh.
It's about $10,000 less.
Yeah.
$10,000 less?
So this said the Director of Special Projects was 22, 21. $57,000, almost $58,000 was the Director of Special Projects. I mean, I guess I would just say the same?
I was also gonna suggest you could put a range if you'd like, and then determine that. That's what we've done with some of the part-time. I think that way, when you are negotiating with a potential prospect, then you could use that range, maybe. I don't know if that's something you want to consider.
I have an idea. How about we say 2,000 to 2,500 biweekly? Is that... That'd be anywhere from $52,000 to $65,000. That would be a good... That would be a good, I think that would be a good range.
And maybe we also need to determine, I don't know if you want me to put the percentages as equal percentages from the funds that they would be paid from since they're, they would be all departments, I assume.
Were allowed to take it from each department? I would just, 33, 33, 33, I guess, whatever. Does anybody have any other comments? I mean, I guess I'll make a motion to put a range from 2,000 to 2,500 biweekly in this salary ordinance so we can start the process of advertising. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second it. Is there any more discussion?
Yeah, utility supervisor should, the manager, he's on, the manager's going to be above them, correct? Or going to be below them, the utility supervisor?
It's going to be above the utility supervisor.
Yeah.
In terms of reporting, you're talking, right? Yeah. All in favor of 2,000 to 2,500 for the town manager's salary biweekly? All opposed? Motion passed, four to one. Do we all sign this, Gina, or how does this go?
Yes.
So I'll just put. Okay, next is the Preserve Main Street draw request.
So we received another invoice which is included in your packet for ratio. And you can see, I think it was for the construction, this portion, the dating portion. Since the funds come from the state, here, with the R A, have to request those funds to be drawn in order to pay the services. Once we receive those funds, then I will ensure that the funds permit to issue the motions.
So this is a draw, let's see, what are we drawing out? 1.5?
4,000. It's just the single, the single invoice at this point.
I'm sorry, the professional fee, thank you. Okay, so this is for $4,000 draw for ratio.
Correct.
Is there a motion to approve the, the draw request number two?
I'd make that motion.
John made a motion to approve the draw request, is there a second?
I second.
For the second in favor? Dan, did you? I'm sorry, I can't see. All opposed, motion carried. Just that first page, yeah. Next, just another thing on the Preserve Main Street. The construction was supposed to start very soon. We're having a meeting here this week to talk with the contractor and find out the progress of that. And we had the quarterly meeting with Oprah on the Preserve Main Street grant. I think it went pretty well. And everybody's on track and fulfilling all the requirements as part of the grant. So that part looked good. And that's all I have. I mean, I have a bunch of announcements, but does anybody have anything else? Okay, so just so we all kind of know about the, one of the projects in the Health Program is the Pickleball Complex, the Nathan Mill property. So we're working right now on transferring that property from the county. Then we have to go through a couple of resolutions for that. And also, our engineer found that there were three underground tanks on the property. At one point, and two of them have been dug up and removed, but there's one still there. So that'll be super exciting when we dig it up to find out what the soil is around it. Obviously, if the soil around it is somehow bad, we'll have, we'll have more environmental reviews to go through if something happened. But it said it was closed in 1983, so maybe, maybe they closed it correctly. We'll hope. So in terms of the next topic, is the parking spaces behind the police department, one of the things the Whitewater Canal Trail Program said that they would do was transfer those over to us. But since that time, we've done some research, actually, the Assessors Office did, and found that there was a deed from 2017 where Ed Knett gave it to Whitewater Trails, gave it to us, and there was some confusion on who actually owns the spaces. But regardless of that transfer, there was no actual survey done at that time in 2017. And so the Assessors Office never recorded it because they don't record it without a survey. So I think, and I'm not exactly, I'm not 100% sure, but I think we're going to have to do a survey on that land to get it switched over legally. Now, Bill said that that survey was going to cost $4,000. I just want to make sure that everybody had all the information I did. I still have a plan. That's just information at this point. Still trying to find out if we actually need it and what we need to do to fix it. Or do we just forget about it and just move on with our lives? Next is, most of the people in the town got their photos taken, official photos, but I'm missing five people. And that's another two employees, but the rest are the council members. Do you guys, would, do you want to do it at night? Would you, during the end of the day? Or you're just going to call Karis yourself and figure it out?
If you give me her number, I'll call.
I mean, I want to make it as easy as possible for her so she's not, you know. But it seems like maybe it might be better if you guys just call her yourselves and then I'll just set it up for the two employees. Okay, that's great, thanks. Went to a webinar, we had 47 sponsors this year. So it's a little better than I thought. And all went well the other night with the lighting and the November Noel.
Looks very nice.
Great, thanks. Just want to give you an update on the code enforcement that's been happening here this year. Well, we started tracking all the code violations since February. So far, the team has closed out 44 of those code violations and 14 are still open. And some of those are getting along, they're in for a lot. Some of them require surveys that we're waiting for. But I just wanted to update the council that any complaints that are coming in are being tracked and being worked and we'll follow up on those every couple of weeks. Information about the Business Incubator, which is yet another project in the Health Program. I've contacted a couple of different trainers to come in and to first give a quote on conducting some training for new business owners and also for current business owners to expand their businesses or help them with whatever they need. And so that's moving along a little bit. I've asked Triad as part of their call to take a look at the building to see how much it would cost for renovations. And that was one idea that's been thrown at me is whatever we need for that building to renovate it is something that we could apply for the S E I Ready 2.0 and see if we could get some money from that to finish that. Next is Randolph Park. So Rocky and I met with a contractor today that does playgrounds and he's going to start to give us a quote on what he thinks is best for Randolph Park so we can move that project forward. Mark Sharn called me about the showroom center at the door, for the storage area in the showroom center, the current door is a 30-inch door and the rack that they use to move the tables and chairs in and out is like 30 inches and a console are hitting it and banging it out. So what he wants to do is take that door out, expand it into a 36-inch door or 42-inch door. And he also said he would make it a pocket door. And he said that the fire department would pay for the materials and would do the work. So he just wanted to, we would approve that. Good to go?
Yeah.
Okay.
I recommend 42, just looking at it.
I'll tell him, thank you very much. Next is the crosswalk safety. So I'm not satisfied with the little alligator things. I've asked the state if we can paint, repaint the crosswalks at those locations so it can make it a little bit more visible. And I just sent a letter email today asking. He was supposed to come down last week to do another, look at it to make sure that it was as safe as it could be. He did also recommend that we buy a huge thing that goes on the side of the sidewalk and then if you're driving here and it goes like above the lanes, which would be more safety, but it would also cost, I'm sure, a million dollars. I just asked him if we could paint, repaint the sidewalks because you can barely see the crosswalks. So hopefully he'll get back on that. I mean, I don't know if you guys are satisfied with the safety of it with just those little alligator teeth. It just seems kind of simple. Next is the town park sign project. Are you guys still working on the town park, making a sign for the town park?
We haven't had a meeting since the, just let, we can start it first of the year.
Okay. Thanks. Next is the eclipse. So one of the requests from the Eclipse group to the town was make sure the streetlights don't turn on if the eclipse happens. So I called Duke and they said that the street lights are based off of, you know, dusk to dawn or whatever lighting, that because the eclipse is so short, they might not even turn off. And I was like, was that an expert opinion or, you know, can we get a technical person to actually? So Benny said that he could give us a quote to tell us how many lights we could turn off. And he would have to come and turn them off like a day or two before. And then we could do it, you know, two blocks or the whole kit and caboodle or eight blocks. Obviously, more blocks would be more money, but they'd have to do it a couple of days before because they actually have to go to each one and do something to it. You can't just press a button fast. So that quote is coming to me soon, I don't know when, but soon. Also, so I don't know if you guys know, we have wireless in the town park. Does anybody ever use it? It was out, it has been out for quite some time, and so we got that fixed. So now wireless is in the park. And if anybody notices that the wireless in the park is not working, let someone know and we'll get it fixed again. That's all I have. Sorry, lots of announcements, been busy. Anything else from the public?
I'd just like to thank the town board members that went and froze the ponds and made the decision they made on the new sewer project. It's refreshing to see that there are those who have a town of, that they're interested that aren't, and I'm going to take my hat to the law and say that you have renewed my faith in the town of Brookville.
Thank you. Thanks, I'll undertake a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
John made a motion to adjourn, is there a second? Dan seconded all in favor, all opposed, motion carried. Meeting's adjourned, thank you all for coming.